Okay, good evening. It is seven o'clock. I will call to order the August 20th, 2024 meeting of the Fort Atkinson City Council. Clerk Ebert, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Jacob?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Schultz?
Here.
President Lesko here?
Here.
Thank you.
Item three, public hearings. We have none this evening. Item four, public comment. The city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon: name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. And please note for hybrid meetings, anyone who is following us along on Zoom, if anyone wishes to speak during the public comment period, please raise your virtual hand through Zoom as the chat box is not monitored during the meeting. And those on the call, please remain muted if you are not recognized to speak. We have the one who's signed up in person this evening. There's a signup sheet outside. If that's okay. We have an individual who would like to offer some comments or in public comments still. If you would, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Curtis Abendroth. I moved here in 1939. Lived on North Main Street for the last past fifty, sixty years.
If you would give us your full address for the record.
One thousand North Main.
Thank you.
Mm hmm. I was looking in our daily union. And the part I didn't quite understand, and it could be wrong, but how often is the daily union ever wrong? Yeah, the balance is talked about the according to the agenda for the workshop, the balance for the TD, TID number eight at the end of twenty-three was about 1.3 million. That's what the balance was. It began the year with a balance of eight hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and twenty-eight. I don't quite understand what that means. Is it worth that much more? Is that what the city owes? Their interest, is that interest different differential?
This is the time for you to provide public comment on that. It's not a question and answer period.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Well, I, I, one thing I do know is that in the year 2023, the city paid over half a million, over five hundred, over half a million dollars, or five fifty million, I think it was, in interest. And I hate to see the city keep spending money on things such as housing areas. They've got land that they haven't been able to sell. They got streets that need to be repaired. And I think that there are some things that are far more important than investing in things that don't sell. I'm looking at East Kramer. I'm looking at East Blackhawk Drive. And if you're driving down, for example, East Kramer, I've never taken the time to count the number of street patches that are in there, but I would venture to say from North Main Street to the railroad tracks that there are probably at least one hundred or more patches. The street should be fixed. You just can't keep throwing money at this stuff. People, we have industries in that area that rely a lot on trucking. And it's like driving down the street with rumble strips. And I would hope that some of your things such as this new area on Banker Road, and I, I agree that it's, the, the Banker Road is an ideal location for housing. And I would also agree that the city is short on housing. But I don't agree that the city should get that involved in buying more land and spending more money for things that are for, for projects that should be taken care of to make the city look better and take care of customers, which are a lot of trucking companies that rely, if you go there on Kramer and Blackhawk Drive, there's tons of trucks that are using that area all the time. And I, I feel bad for them as they don't have a chance to really go on a, on a, on a clean streak.
Thank you for your comments. The three minutes have expired. At this time, if there is anyone following us along, following along with us on Zoom, if you would like to offer some public comment, this would be the time. Just ask a second time if anyone is interested on Zoom in providing public comment. I don't hear any, and this item is, this agenda item is closed. Item number five, consent agenda. The consent agenda outlined below is hereby presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed, items five A through five I.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the consent agenda as listed, items five A through five I. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item six, petitions, requests, and communications. There are none this evening. Resolutions and ordinances, item seven A, second and possible third and final reading of an ordinance creating section ninety-four dash five of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the authority of crossing guards. Police Chief Bump.
This would be the second reading of an ordinance that adopts state statute to help us align with our current practices. Since the last reading, I've had no comment or inquiries of information based off of the ordinance as drafted. And today I look for, hopefully that we can move forward and make sure that this ordinance is passed and in place prior to the start of the school year. Opened any questions, or if you've had any feedback, I can try to help answer any questions that you may have received.
First day in school is the
September sixth or seventh?
Fourth.
Fourth?
The fourth. For the public schools, for, yep.
They haven't received any concerns or complaints from anyone, so I would move to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of the ordinance creating the section ninety-four dash five of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to authority of crossing guards.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion on the motion?
Now, I, I, I see this as important to get it done before the school year starts.
Okay, any further comment? Hearing none, motion is to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of the ordinance creating section ninety-four dash five of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the authority of crossing guards. A motion to suspend requires a super majority. Clerk Ebert, would you please call the roll? Or, please call the vote.
Councilman Jacob?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Lesko here?
Aye.
She carries.
Motion carries unanimously. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance then.
I move to adopt the ordinance creating section ninety-four dash five of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the authority of crossing guards.
Second. A motion a second to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, motion is to adopt the ordinance creating section ninety-four dash five of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the authority of crossing guards. Do a voice vote on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Item seven B, second reading of an ordinance to amend section sixty-six dash thirty-eight of the City of Fort Atkinson Code of general ordinances relating to members of the plan commission. Manager Houseman.
Thank you. So this is the second reading of this ordinance to amend sixty-six point thirty-eight. Currently, we have Engineer Selly, who is also the Public Works Director as a member of the Plan Commission. Previous previously this year, we changed those two positions to create a Public Works Director position in which Andy Selly will remain, and then also a city engineer position, which we are currently seeking to fill. So this ordinance change just allows the discretion of the city manager to appoint either the city engineer as Secretary of the Plan Commission or the Director of Public Works as Secretary of the Plan Commission. So you can see the the draft ordinance is, is attached for your review. I have not gotten any feedback on this. There is not a rush on this, so if the council does want to have a third reading at the next meeting, we can do that. Or the council can suspend the rules and offer the third reading this evening. The ordinance committee met on July sixteenth and recommended that the, the city council review this ordinance. And then, as I said, the first reading was on August sixth. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for the city manager?
I think this gives us a little bit more flexibility. Therefore, I move to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of the ordinance to amend to section sixty-six dash thirty-eight of the City of Fort Atkinson Code of General Ordinances relating to members of the Plan Commission.
Second.
A motion a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the motion is to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of the ordinance to amend section sixty-six dash thirty-eight of the City of Fort Atkinson Code of General Ordinances relating to members of the Plan Commission. This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Jacob?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Lesko here?
Aye. Motion to suspend the rules is approved unanimously. I would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance then.
I move to adopt the ordinance to amend section sixty-six dash thirty-eight of the City of Fort Atkinson Code of General Ordinances relating to members of the Plan Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none, motion is to adopt the ordinance to amend section sixty-six dash thirty-eight of the City of Fort Atkinson Code of General Ordinances relating to members of the Plan Commission. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item seven C, review and possible action relating to a resolution amending the 2024 Annual City of Fort Atkinson Budget relating to a transfer of funds between tax increment districts. Manager Houseman.
Thank you. So this was part of our discussion at the workshop at six o'clock, but I will just, there's additional information in the memo as well. Our 2024 budget was adopted by the city council in November of 2023. That budget included general fund revenues and expenditures, as well as our tax, five tax increment financing districts, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Right now, seven and eight are donor tids to six, which is a distressed tid. In the budget, in the 2024 budget, we had a transfer of funds in the amount of four hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-eight cents scheduled for eight to six. And we also included street improvements in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand and forty-eight dollars to be done in tid eight. The reason that was in the budget document was to support some of the road infrastructure within one half mile of tid eight, which is in tid nine, to support the Banker Road infrastructure. The expenditure period for tid eight ends in September of 2024, and we were not able to get the roads designed and contracted to be able to meet that deadline. To, we have to have a contract out for the improvement to be able to actually to spend the money after that expenditure deadline. So we were not able to, to do that. But as I point out in the memo, we, there are other funding sources, including a 1.4 million dollar grant from the Department of Transportation for Banker Road. And then there, we also, the city borrowed 3.2 million dollars in the beginning of 2024 in order to support that infrastructure as well. So there are other funding sources for that infrastructure in, in tid, in tid nine. So we are asking the city council to reallocate one million, three hundred and six thousand dollars and three hundred and six thousand and three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, excuse me, to, from tid eight to tid six in order to pay down the, the debt in six and return funds to the general fund that the general fund had spent over the life of that tid. And in the financial analysis section of the memo, it includes where those, includes those budget line items, the account numbers, and where the money would be transferring from and to. So for a total, we would add the two hundred, or excuse me, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-eight cents that was scheduled to be transferred from tid eight to tid six. We would add that to, if this budget amendment is approved, the 1.3 million dollar number that I just mentioned for a total amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents to tid six. So, and then the second table in the financial analysis section shows the general fund advances of one, negative 1.4 million dollars, plus the negative cumulative balance in the tid, which is eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars per the 2023 audit, for a total of negative 2,288,620 dollars. So that is the negative balance of tid six. Transferring these funds would, the regular transfer from tid eight that was scheduled and was budgeted, plus this additional 1.3 million dollars of transfer would, we would have an anticipated end of year, 2024, negative balance in the tid of 510,000 dollars, which would then be paid off in 2025, allowing tid six to close in 2026 per our schedule that we did review at the workshop tonight. I know that was a lot of numbers. A budget amendment requires two-thirds of the city council to approve, to approve, so that would be three of the four member present, members present tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions about this. We do, staff does recommend that the city council adopt this resolution amending the 2024 Annual City of Fort Atkinson Budget relating to a transfer between tax increment districts and direct the city clerk to publish the change, to execute the transfer and publish the change on the city's website.
So again, this money that's in tid eight has to either be used to cover the other tids or be given back to the other taxing jurisdictions, correct? And how we're at that expenditure period, we can't expend out of anymore?
Correct. So, and I will also say that the, the change in fund balance from the end of 2022, which was the eight hundred thousand dollars to the 1.3 million dollars, is increment that was generated in 2023, or excuse me, in 2022, that was not spent on projects. So it stayed in the tid in the fund balance. So there was a positive fund balance of eight hundred thousand dollars. Then all the increment in twenty-four came in, only, or excuse me, in twenty-three came in. Only some was sent out, either for projects, for administrative costs within the tax increment district, and also as a donation in twenty-three to tid six. So, and that's all included in those tid reports that you have in your, in your packet here, as well as in the tid budgets. Because we do remember in the 2024 budget, we have actual data from twenty-three, twenty-two, and twenty-one, previous three years. And then, so that is all included in that twenty-four budget document.
In, in summary, right, to based on, let me rephrase. This seems to be the smartest way to, to use the the money in tid eight that we're legally allowed to do. So this is the best course of action, pay down the debt from tid six. I, I guess I'm not really aware of any other better way or allowable, allowable way to, to use that.
That's a really good point. So we couldn't, the, the city would not be allowed to take any of this money and use it towards general operations, right? We couldn't take this money from tid eight and go fix a road on the other side of town. Right? So this money has to either be used within the tid for projects, or because we did those amendments in 2011 that allowed these tids seven and eight to donate money to six, the money can be used as a donation. So I, I, I agree that this is, this is probably the, the most effective way to use these funds that are in tid eight and will accelerate the possibility of closure of tid eight, as well as tids six and seven, which, as we talked about during the workshop, will put value back on the tax roll eventually, but also create an opportunity to create this affordable housing fund.
Closing tids are always a cause or reason to, to celebrate, and this gives us, right now, we have a window of opportunity to, as the city manager said, it's an exciting opportunity, a positively impact, affect and improve the housing situation we have. And of course, there's plenty of time for us to hammer out the details of how we'll reallocate the dollars to which bucket that we, that was presented to us, but I, I share the excitement for for this opportunity.
I move to approve the resolution amending the 2024 Annual City of Fort Atkinson Budget relating to a transfer of funds between taxing and increment districts.
Second.
A motion a second. Any further discussion?
Just like to say, you know, the way it's presented, because we can't create any other expenses is the reason why we need to do this. So, you know, it's not that we don't want to fix the other roads in town. It's, we can't use this money to do that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the resolution amending the 2024 Annual City of Fort Atkinson Budget relating to a transfer of funds between tax increment districts. This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Jacob?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Lesko here?
Aye. Motion is approved unanimously. Item seven D, review and possible action relating to a resolution extending the life of tax incremental district number eight, tid number eight, for one year to fund affordable housing programs and projects within the City of Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. Manager Houseman.
Thank you. As the council heard in our workshop, and, and now that, that the resolution to amend the the 2024 budget has been passed, the city is now in the position to close tid eight in 2025, and we can, within that time period, extend the life of the tid for one year, using that, those funds to improve the city's housing stock. And seventy-five percent of that, of the increment generated from this would be, must be to benefit affordable housing, with the remaining portion to just improve the general housing stock. We did review the definition of affordable housing relating to this program. And the, this would result in approximately 1,162,155 dollars for affordable housing efforts in 2025 and beyond. And staff does recommend that the city council adopt the resolution extending the life of the tax increment district number eight for one year to fund affordable housing programs and projects within the City of Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. And you do, again, have those sample affordable housing programs and budget in that packet. Those are, those are, certainly those can change and look different. I would anticipate bringing some more information after this budget, maybe in the winter, to the city council for further discussion, to really kind of put those programs and guidelines and applications in place. Obviously, there would be applications, and there would be criteria, and there would be a body that would need to judge the applications against the criteria. So all of that would still have to be figured out. I think the important part of this resolution is that the affordable housing program would have one or more of the following elements, and this is from the resolution. Down payment assistance, construction incentives, investment in public infrastructure, and or home improvement grants. So those are simply elements again, and how the council would prioritize each of those elements would just be how they're funded, which we will certainly look at a lot closer in the coming months. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Can you touch again on the expected timeline for all those other things to happen?
Sure. So the expected timeline would, for the program piece, so if we establish, if the city council approves this resolution tonight, then actually the, the tax rate that's set for the budget, for the twenty-five budget, would be used to would be used to calculate the value that goes into that tid. So the money for this affordable housing program would come into the fund when taxes are collected in 2025, that 1.1 million dollars. And at that point, then, nothing would be doled out, obviously, until all the programs are in place and approved by the city council. And then the, that would remain open for one year. That increment would be gathered. And then in 2020, in 2025, we, the city council would then adopt a resolution signaling to the DOR that they would, that we are closing tid eight. And then in 2026, all of that, the value would be back on the tax roll.
So this money would have to be used by 2026?
Not necessarily. It, the money is in this affordable housing fund that is outside the general fund and can remain open until the money is gone.
Okay.
So, and part of this process was adding more money from the closures of seven and six in the future to this fund that would be for that designated purpose. It would be separate from the general fund, it would be separate from all the tids. And then when that fund is gone, then, then the program would close, or we could keep the fund and the parameters open, you know, for the next, for the next tid. But we would likely have different rules and, and maybe have different priorities and focus for the next time something closes.
But then tentatively speaking, if, depending how the timeline plays out, next summer, this money could be available to promote the grants for development or whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions for the city manager, or is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm always a little nervous as it relates to, like, government getting in, into the economics of, of housing and whatnot. However, I do believe that some of the options that we have could actually help the city in the long run. And, and therefore, I, I will move to approve the resolution extending the life of tax incremental district number eight for one year to fund affordable housing programs within the City of Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin.
Second.
Good motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, motion is to approve the resolution extending the life of tax incremental district number eight for one year to fund affordable housing programs within the City of Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Reports of officers, boards, and committees, item eight A, city managers' report, manager Houseman.
Thank you. On August eighth, Clerk, Treasurer, Finance Director Ebert and I attended the Baird Municipal Finance Workshop in Milwaukee. There were sessions on tax increment financing, capital improvement planning, financial management plans, debt issuance and borrowing, among others. We really brought back some, some great information that we'll use over the next budget and CIP cycle. I also want to thank Clerk Ebert and her staff, and all of the our election officials, along with our Parks and Recreation staff for administering another free, fair, and transparent election on August thirteenth. Voter turnout was thirty-seven percent. Voter turnout was thirty-seven percent or two thousand, four hundred and sixty total voters, six hundred and forty-eight of whom cast absentee ballots and one thousand, eight hundred and twelve cast ballots on election day. I also want to note that some stock photos of our polling place were featured in several election articles on W P R. So it's kind of a fun win. I also want to thank all the elected officials and staff who participated in City Hall selfie day on August fifteenth. This is a yearly celebration of public service where people gather in front of municipal buildings to show community pride. And I did, I did receive a number of compliments from other municipalities for our efforts on City Hall selfie day. So thank you. Also, on August fifteenth, I attended the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Urban Alliance meeting in Milwaukee. We were welcomed by Mayor Johnson and then heard a presentation from Valie Boy from the Department of Revenue relating to those innovation fund grants approved with Act twelve. The application for the planning grants should be available in November. And they expect to, the operational grant applications to be available mid twenty twenty-five. We also heard from the city of Waukesha relating to their five-year operating plan, something that we do hope to recreate here in the future. Also, on August fifteenth, Public Works Superintendent Tom Williamson hosted council members and assembly candidate and others for a construction tour of the new Public Works and Parks Operations facility. The walls are up and they're working on the roof, and it's really been great to see the progress on on that facility. Internally, we are in the middle of the twenty twenty-five budget and twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty capital improvement planning process. We're having our budget meetings with each department over the next two weeks, and the finance committee will meet on September tenth. And then the city council budget workshop will take place on October ninth. I want to thank Adam Rico, Vice President at Baird for presenting information tonight on the status of our tids. We have some work, exciting work ahead of us, but it's very, very exciting stuff. And the city is still hiring. We have openings for the city engineer position, a public works crew person and police officers. Visit the city's website for more information. And finally, the Fort Atkinson Community Foundation, which is a is a wonderful partner and leader in this community. The executive director Sue Hartwick has announced her retirement at the end of this year, and they are seeking a new executive director. It's a really great opportunity for someone to inspire and support the Fort Atkinson community through philanthropy. The their, the Community Foundation website has more information about that opportunity, but I wanted to to give it a shout out. So that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Item nine, unfinished business. There are, is done this evening. New business, item ten A, review and possible action relating to a certified survey map for the property located at seventeen oh eight Montclair Place. Building and zoning administrator Drayer.
Thank you. This was a fairly simple. It's a current duplex lot on Montclair that is owned by Aaron Berry and Samantha Thierry of Tempo Design Homes. This is actually their second home that they've done on this street. They did one last year where we approved a split lots, zero, zero lot line. So you could be, you can have a duplex placed right on there with the zero lot line distance between those and separate ownership. This project has already begun, the the structure itself, which is permitted on the lot itself. They just wish to have separate parcel numbers for this. We do require a footing verification form to be signed and verified by the land surveyor that they're use to ensure that the placement of the the building is indeed centered on the parcel. Other than that, it's it's pretty straightforward. I mean, they they had a few things missing on their C S M. Minor details, phone number, lot line distances, setbacks. And those were all added to the recommendation from the plan commission along with the joint maintenance agreement, which we do require for any shared parts of that structure, the dividing wall and in the terrace where their sewer line meets up with the with the the city's main. Other than that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Yeah, the the neighboring properties are laid out the same way.
Yes. Yes, the the one directly to the west of this is identical down the way as well as to the east before you get to the, I can't remember the road name that goes into the Crown of Life School there. But that is also a duplex lot, which I believe the same two women own. And I think they have plans to develop that one as well.
Yeah, I I see this as low risk as we demonstrated that with the neighboring properties. Therefore, I move to approve the certified survey map for the property located at seventeen oh eight Montclair Place, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Wait, motion a second. Approve the certified survey map. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the motion is to approve a certified survey map for the property located at seventeen oh eight Montclair Place, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item ten B, review and possible action relating to a certified survey map for six eleven East Sherman Avenue, four oh three McMillan Street, six fifteen North Fourth Street, six oh nine North Fourth Street, six oh three North Fourth Street, and existing and existing Fourth Street right of way, Director of Public Works Selly.
Thank you. You should all put a little pat on your backs as should the planning commission, as this is the last approval for the Ford Healthcare Expansion project that we've seen over the last two years or so. This is a certified survey map that will draw the instrument that will vacate the right of way that we've already approved. It will also adjust the right of way along McMillan Street for some potential future softening of that curve as it goes across North Fourth Street. The planning commission reviewed this and had no comments. We did have one addition, late addition, that was my miss, and that was to add an easement to North Fourth Street for those utilities that remain underground there that are city-owned. Will have Attorney Westrick draw that up and and submit that to be recorded at the same time with this C S M. Basically, what we're doing is taking all of those individual lots that were there, the four lots that were residential lots, as well as the hospital campus and then North Fourth Street and creating a single lot on there. So really tidies things up. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have related to this request.
The plan commission did review this at their last Plan Commission meeting and recommended approval.
They did.
Any questions for Director Selly? Not, is there a motion?
I move to approve a certified survey map for six eleven East Sherman Avenue, four oh three McMillan Street, six fifteen North Fourth Street, six oh nine North Fourth Street, and six oh third North Fourth Street and existing Fourth Street right of way.
Second. Okay, we have motion and a second to approve the certified survey map. Any further discussion?
I should just note that that is subject to the conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Yes, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion then? Hearing none, motion is to approve a certified survey map for six eleven East Sherman Avenue, four oh three McMillan Street, six fifteen North Fourth Street, six oh nine North Fourth Street, six oh three North Fourth Street, and existing Fourth Street right of way, subject to conditions in the staff report. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven miscellaneous, there are miscellaneous items this evening. Claims appropriations and contract payments, item twelve A, review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and authorization of payment.
Move to approve the verified claims as presented.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the claims. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, motion is to approve the verified claims as presented. This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Jacob?
Yeah.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Les, go ahead.
Aye. Motion is approved unanimously. Item thirteen, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.